It is amazing. Wow. That's cute. Good girl. I don't know, kind of. I like the color. I like that color. You've been asked.
Are you, uh?
Get up there, she's like... No, you should. You should. That's a hairpiece that's a horse. Next, the parents, come on. Come on. Yes. They're up by the door. They always get them shut. Uh-huh. What, uh? Okay. Yeah. Look at that. But, no, there is...
Sorry. Rejected.
We talked to them, yeah, I don't think they have, you know? Yeah. Lucky, you see, found it. Go fill out that sheet. I can help all the time. He's got the hairdos, he's got the... And models, models.
Not here yet. Good evening. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of Galt. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Here.
Councilmember Hewer?
Here.
Councilmember Campion?
Here.
Councilmember Powers?
Here.
Mayor Cruz? Here. Keep following the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic and to its champions, the United States of America and to the citizens who will defend the justice of our home. Before we go any further, Mr. City Attorney, would you like to report back from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council is in closed session this evening on one item, conference of legal counsel on anticipated litigation, and there's no action to report.
Thank you. Moving on, can we get the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and Solidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting will air Friday, September 9th, at 9:00 a.m., and Saturday, September 10th, at 2:00 p.m. It is being closed captions and will be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website, www.cigalt.ca.us.
Thank you. Do we have any agenda approvals, additions, or deletions?
No.
All right. Seeing that, we'll move on to presentations. Can I have Kevin Brown come up, please?
I'm gonna come down to you.
Okay. Sure.
Well, anyways, uh, thank you for the opportunity for me to be here on behalf of the Galt FC Soccer Board. Uh, and I'm honored to have a team here, as you can see, many of them here, uh, with parents and other people who are around here. And the reason why I want to recognize them to today, and I'm getting our stats, uh, I've been coaching soccer for over twenty years, played at a high level, Lodi, and Galt, Galt High, Liberty Ranch as well, and I've never seen, um, it's hard to, for those who don't understand soccer, there's a level of soccer that, uh, most people don't understand, and, uh, this is, uh, the highest level I've ever seen an under seventeen boys team play. Um, they're ranked right now, they just won a tournament in LA. They're gonna be ranked third in the nation in the next couple days.
Wow.
Regionally, they're ranked at second, California's second. I will tell you that, uh, we pride ourselves in our voluntary coaches here, and these parents pay a lot of money to have them go to tournaments and things, a very dedicated bunch, and, uh, they are being sought out from college showcases to come. They want them to be there, and, uh, they, uh, have had a lot of opportunities. You're gonna see a lot of college players here in the future, and some going major league soccer. I'm quite confident you're gonna see that in the near future. So, they're coached by Coach Rudy, if you'd come forward here. Uh, his head coach. They also got Coach John, uh, if he'd come forward as well. The brain behind the operation to make things happen is their manager, Lisa, if she'd come forward. And if the boys would like to make their way to the side, come on over, boys, let's give them a big hand, 'cause, uh, they're the ones who make it to the side. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
Hey, come on. You get my... Good job. Congratulations. Excellent. So proud of you. Congratulations. Great job. Forward to the future. Congratulations. We're so proud of you. Good job. Congratulations. Good job. Thank you for being from Galt. Glad you're able to come out. Yeah. Glad you're able to see how pretty people happy are. Proud of you. Each one of you. Uh, yeah. Fabulous. Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Great job. Good representing our city. We love that. Oh, that's okay. Congratulations.
And on behalf of the Galt City Council, we'd like to recognize your achievement as both the 2015, uh, State Cup Champions and the 2016 State Cup Finals.
Coming up, boys, they're gonna do a group picture here, and the last thing I'd like to say is what I didn't say is they're part of the National Premier League.
Yay.
And no other teams in this community are part of a National Premier League, and so they earned a spot at the national, uh, finals and did really well there as well, so, again, thank you very much.
Good organization.
Good job. How many of you guys are actually on the team? I mean, but, no, no, I know all of you are, but it's, people aren't here. How many are on the team? Nineteen? So, most of you are here, great.
And a beer?
Yeah. Congratulations.
Sure, good swish, man.
They're in mean places. Pretty amazing. Yeah. Third in the nation. Good job, you think. A lot of dedication to families and, uh... I love this girl, this family. Great job. Pretty awesome. Yeah. Really good turnout.
Okay, thank you. Our next presentation will be both of our school board superintendents, uh, on an update on the current bonds before us.
Green Pointer, Ryder, Gordon, Left, Air, Back. So, I'm Elizabeth Kaufman, and Karen Schauer, High School Superintendent, Elementary School District Superintendent, and we're here this evening to share with you, um, some information about our school facilities. So, this is a small slide, there's a lot of information on it, and, uh, we wanted to bring to your attention just some of the, the areas of, uh, facility needs that we have in, um, terms of achieving what we believe is in education for the 21st century. So, we really think that, um, in order to prepare all of our students for a college career and civic life, which is a mission that we share with you, um, and we share with each other for the children in our communities, that, um, quality facilities, uh, are essential, um, to learning, and, uh, so, we really have taken our, our time as a district and as a, as a community to look at where, what our needs are. As a quick background, um, Galt Joint Union High School District serves, uh, twenty-two-hundred students approximately, who come from four feeder districts, Arcoe, Galt, uh, New Hope, and Oakview, and we have two high schools, we, um, have two comprehensive high schools, uh, Liberty Ranch High School, uh, which was built in 2007, and, uh, Galt High School, which was built in 1951, the current facilities. It's been around for longer than that, uh, its inception, but, uh, we have some, some significant needs. I'm approximating my fiftieth birthday, and, um, you know, I guess some of those classrooms are, were made before I was born, and, um, haven't been upgraded significantly, um, although much of what's happened in my own lifetime in terms of technology and, um, curriculum has, has certainly, uh, been of benefit to me personally, and I would like to make sure that our facilities are representing what our, our students need, um, and in the elementary school district, I'll turn it over to Karen to mention briefly her...
All right. And this is her, right there? Yeah, I think. All right, and, and, and good evening, everyone. I wanted to, um, add before I continue that our Director of Business Services are here this evening, and I, I would ask that they raise their hands, um, Tom Berenson and Cory Will are here tonight, so thank you so much for being here. And just, uh, a brief, a brief overview about, uh, the Galt Elementary School District. We have approximately three thousand eight hundred preschool through grade eight children. We have seven school locations, one, um, preschool center, five elementary schools, one middle school. The average age of schools in our school district is twenty-nine years of age, and in 2001, we were successful with a bond that, um, helped us to construct McCaffrey Middle School and Lake Canyon Elementary School. And if we, I'm gonna go to the next slide right here, is that what has happened in both districts is that we've gone through a process to really analyze, um, the needs, a comprehensive analysis of both, um, elementary, uh, school districts, uh, schools and high school district schools, and you'll see that in the facilities master plans that both districts worked on, a number of stakeholders were involved, from employees to community members to youth and others, and that, um, based on that, you can see that there's a lot of need in both districts. There's over forty-seven million dollars' worth of improvements in the high school district and a hundred and fifty-six million in the elementary district. And in elementary district, we do serve seven school locations, and the bottom line is that when we work with resources, that the total cost of repairs and modernization is really beyond the scope of what state funds can do for us.
So, these, these are some examples of, um, facilities needs at, uh, our high schools. Um, you know, one of, one of the issues is that we have classrooms that have leaky roofs, we have, um, ceilings that require us to relocate kids in the middle of the semester when it starts to rain, um, some of the vinyl is peeling off of classroom walls, uh, flooring is substandard, and those are the classrooms that we actually keep open. We have a number of other classrooms that count for our capacity as a school district in the state's, um, count of how many facilities we have and what eligibility we have, but we actually can't open those to students because they, um, have suspicions of things like asbestos, so, um, not to mention feral cats. So, uh, we have some significant needs that, that aren't even things that we would present to you in pictures, uh, and then, of course, you know, we, if anyone's been through our stadiums, uh, the one at Liberty Ranch was never finished, uh, and the one at Galt High School, uh, has, uh, pretty compromised, um, bleachers and, um, just some basic safety, safety considerations that when we look at our, our community, we want to make sure our, our fields and facilities are really safe and accessible for all students, all families, anybody in the community that wants to enter our campus and be, be, um, able to participate is, uh, welcome, and we need to make sure our facilities make that possible for them as well. Um, so, in, in particular, in our district, we're looking for thirty-six million dollars in local funding, uh, leaky roofs, um, deteriorating plumbing, uh, faulty sewers, uh, we had a sewer backup last week, I think, last Friday, I mean, it always seems like things happen on Fridays, um, but, uh, you know, and, and on the, the interesting and exciting side is when we look at our mission of preparing students for, for college career and civic life to really update some of our, our existing career facilities and then build some facilities that improve them for science, technology, engineering, healthcare, mathematics, uh, those are all ways that we prepare our students, uh, for the future and for jobs, uh, beyond our, our classroom walls, so, uh, electrical systems, uh, fire alarm systems, intercom systems all connected to electrical systems are things that we really can't rely on right now. Um, we would like to hook ourselves up with the, the police department in terms of our, our safety announcements and needs, but we don't have a systematic, uh, approach at even to our intercom system and surveillance, so, uh, we have some, some significant needs. And then, of course, you know, restrooms, classrooms, as I mentioned earlier, and, uh, tabling and infrastructure, because one of the things we need to do to steward, uh, taxpayers' dollars is look at what are efficiencies in purchasing, uh, things like curriculum, and now that so much of curricula are digital, we would be far better suited to create nimble, uh, classrooms by purchasing curriculum that is online, that can be updated, that we can deliver to students 24/7, rather than buying a seven-year adoption for a social studies tech, which will cost us on average five hundred thousand dollars, and when the next world event happens, um, it's outdated. So, we really are trying to see this part of our overall view of how to get our kids ready for the future, both instructionally and academically, as well as, you know, in their, in the classroom facility, so, um, we have some pretty significant needs.
And then, in the elementary district, these are just a few snapshots, and some of these... Whoops, gotta go. Thank you. All right, here we go. Just a few shots here. We had a series of open houses, um, last spring, and there were some tours that we provided to community members, not necessarily on the rooftops, as you see here, but what you see are some roofs that need repairs, you see bricks that is, is cracking and, and need some replacement, and then there is, um, also just, um, a water heater in, at Valley Oaks, it's an example of just really very outdated, that, just some examples, and so, in our process in the elementary district, what we found is, or that there are four areas that, um, we're looking at, at what a bond, um, if it were successful, could pass, um, or could, um, support, and one would be looking at areas of safety and security, and there's some commonalities between both districts. Um, secondly, modernization of schools, improvement of existing building systems, and the remodeling or expansion, um, of some of the classrooms or other locations at our schools, because as, as Dr. Kaufman was saying, is that we really want to make sure that our facilities are lined up with high-quality learning as well. And there are, uh, some examples here, and again, some of these are also very similar to what, um, you heard Dr. Kaufman talk about. Um, we want to really look at our fencing, lighting, security systems, um, we do have roofs that need repair along with some flooring. Um, there is energy-efficient efforts that we're looking at and would, uh, support with bond funds. We also want to continue our efforts with technology, we do have wireless access, and again, with improvements through a bond, we would want to be able to support the technology infrastructure that would need to go along with the new work, and also, again, expanding or remodeling some of our classrooms, um, to support high-quality learning. We have a, a high number of portables in our school system that are very, very old and need to be replaced.
So, I think this, this slide kind of, kind of repeats itself, but I think one of the, the most important pieces for, for our community to understand and for you to understand is that when we're looking at bond measures for an elementary district and a high school district simultaneously, it is not a case where, where we're kind of double-dipping on the public, you know? If we were a unified school district like Elk Grove, they would be running, as they have, a single bond election, and that would be a bond election for sixty dollars per, um, a hundred thousand dollars assessed value. In our cases, we're each, uh, running a bond election for thirty dollars per a hundred thousand dollars, so, it doesn't, it, it equals what would be the case if we were a unified school district, and I think some of the information you might be hearing in the community or might hear in, in the future is where are they both going, is it gonna cost, cost us more, and in reality, it's the same as if we were a single K-12 district, and, um, the, the impact on homeowners is the same, and again, we'll emphasize that it's assessed mark, assessed value, not current market value, uh, so, that, that is, um, you know, about thirty dollars per a hundred thousand assessed value, uh, for the elementary, and thirty dollars per a hundred thousand assessed value for the high school district. I think I may have an extra one. It's me, right? Um, so, the other piece that, uh, we're doing, to be as fiscally prudent as we can, uh, we've already, both districts have started a citizens oversight committee, ordinarily you're not required to do that until after you pass the bond, because it is a, a stewarding effort, um, that we want to, you know, ordinarily required, and you have to have a set committee, and it's that number of, uh, individuals representing various community contingent stakeholders, uh, and we are both, um, doing that ahead of time, because we think it's really important to this community that, that they know that there's an organized plan and that we're coordinating and, again, being good stewards, so, we want to emphasize that a committee will be established, uh, that it makes sure that we spend the dollars on what we said we're gonna spend the dollars on, and, um, that the funds stay local, and that we aren't gonna use them for administrative or employee salary and benefits. So, this isn't, it's not a way of padding our own district budget to get things for other, other, other parts of our budget, this is really truly dedicated towards the facilities and, um, fiscal accountability is included in that by nature of the bond itself.
And as we're talking about our schools, um, our schools are, are very much a neighborhood treasure, and neighborhood treasures across the community of Galt, and, um, there is a recent publication that we'll talk about a little bit later, and in this publication called Galt Grown, um, that was really the testimony to how it is that we work together in this community to provide learning and enrichment services. So, uh, what we did is we listed a number of ways that, um, different agencies, City of Galt, um, other, say, uh, agencies in the community, and also local colleges, uh, work with both our districts to ensure that community members, not only children, but adults, have access to our schools, and you'll see the range of things from City Tots to churches, to community college and CSUS at Fair Sight, to scouts, troops, and voter registration, polling places even happens, uh, within our schools. So, again, um, in, in closing, we just, uh, as, as we both have said, that to have the optimal learning, uh, facilities are very important to, to have as well, and what could be better, um, than to have facilities preschool through grade twelve that are, are modernized, um, for the future that our children are living right now, and this is contact information for both, uh, Dr. Kaufman and myself, we invite you as council members or committee members that are here tonight, uh, please to contact us, look at our websites, and, Dr. Kaufman, anything else that you'd like to add?
Anytime anyone wants to take a tour, we're happy to. Always fun to get out of the office for a reason.
Yeah, and we really, we appreciate, uh, this opportunity to share this important information with you tonight. Thank you very much.
Could I ask you one quick question? I don't know what the verbiage is, is on the ballot, does the verbiage on the ballot tell you how much it is per household? Because I think that's really important, because when they look at millions of dollars and only see it's only gonna cost them sixty dollars a year, that's very important, so I'm glad that's the way it's written. Does passing a local bond measure make us eligible for state funds if the, if the bond passes, if the state's measure passes?
It could. I mean, it kind of depends on what, there's a number, I mean, I could defer to you guys, but I'll, I'll ad lib and you can just cop if I'm wrong.
I mean, so, if we pass a local measure, it, it makes us eligible for state dollars?
It allows for national. Right. It helps us. And if we're able to get rid of some of our excess capacity in unusable buildings, it makes us that much more eligible, which means...
Well, 'cause it appears to be the numbers still aren't meeting our needs, right? Still aren't meeting your needs, so...
Right.
I'm just kind of wanting to know that there could be.
Could be.
If we, if the locals, if locally, we come up with funding, then we would be eligible for some other funding. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Neither are we, so, make it more perfect.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Al. Comment to you? Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public comment. Can you have a statement, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of, consideration of the item. Speakers shall resist, restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out the speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the considered speaker sheet to the clerk.
And we have Valente Rodriguez.
Hello, city council members. Um, I would first like to thank you all for allowing me to speak today at this meeting. Um, my name is Allen Rodriguez, I am an eighth grader at McCaffrey Middle School. I love doing video, and so I decided to make a video for the Barbara Payne dedication about her garden, and so I made this video to show her gratitude, show my gratitude for her helping out and her contributions to the city of Galt. Thank you.
Very nice.
who own the community, the youth commission, the city, and many organizations and sponsors. You saw it there a few times a while ago. All of those dedications to this community, her commitment to help make a better place for people from all walks of life. I have a real city tribute to a person who cares so much about this community, continues with our leadership, and although she died, though, she commits herself early to death, and then, again, a good friend to me over the years, and sort of colleagues, and her service on the city council. And so we're going to be, we applaud you, we congratulate you for all you've done.
And next, I'd like to introduce Juliette Rodriguez from the Galt Youth Commission.
Sure. So hi, I'm Juliette. I am on the Galt Youth Commission. And over the last year, I have really gotten to work with Barbara as my adult mentor on the commission. And she's really passionate about the community, and that's one thing I really noticed about her.
We have a fact here. This garden is dedicated to Barbara Payne, whose efforts made it all possible, and you were the driving force. Thank you, Barbara.
Very good.
Very nice. Thank you all. I just wanted to make that video to show my gratitude to Barbara for everything she's done for the City of Galt. I have also worked on videos, I've also worked on the video for the Teen Perspective Art exhibit, and I just finished the video for this upcoming Heritage Festival. I would love to answer any questions from any of these city council members.
Well, I don't know if there's any questions, but I have to say, this is kind of a teary moment for me. But I want to focus on your talent. You did such a great job, and I appreciate the kind words that you said for me, but I really appreciate your talent and your, what, how old?
Uh, I'm thirteen.
Thirteen, wow. You are amazing.
There you go.
Maybe you can give it a hug.
[inaudible].
Oh, women.
Oh, come on. One more.
[inaudible].
Here we go, here we go.
Thank you.
Three, four. Very good. Thank you.
There's anything else?
Well, thanks for turning that.
I'm just being mean.
Very good.
Okay, we next have Karen Schauer and Elizabeth Kaufman.
Are you ready?
All right, here we go again. Yeah, we have, we have some really good news that we'd like to share with you, and one of them is there is a historic publication that came to fruition that took working together, high school district, City of Galt, Galt Elementary School District, and Galt Herald also, to develop a publication that would really showcase opportunities for learning and enrichment in the community of Galt. And again, it's just filled with, I think, a living testimony to opportunities that there are for youth and for families in this community. So one of the highlights went out to all community members, and then there is something that's going to take place that Dr. Kaufman will talk to you about in just a second, that I would just want to say also that, for those of you that may know someone who would desire to have this in Spanish, that we do have Spanish publications of this, and that we have this in digital format that I think is on all of our websites in City of Galt and getting there as well. So we're going to find out more about this because something special is happening Thursday night.
So Thursday night, and again, I have to echo Karen's comments about how this has been a community effort, because we, we've been with Jean more than he may have ever wanted to be with two superintendents, and we've really been working on this document together. And the event that we're hosting on Thursday night at six o'clock right across the street with the two presidents of Sacramento, the Sacramento State, President Nelson, and the Delta College, Sam Akine, President Kathy Hart, that's been an outreach effort collectively for over a year for us. And it really builds on, yes, the mission that each district has for college career and civic life, and the city's mission of being a place where families have children who are prepared for success in life. But it also builds on some of the economic development work that the city has been doing in terms of looking at, really, how important is education, quality education to quality life, and in this case, also to the economic development of the city. So it's been really nice to be able to look at graduation data, post-secondary education data, occupation data, income data that have come through the city to help us inform really why it's so important that we begin to call attention to the importance of post-secondary education in whatever forum it's considered. We don't always mean, when we say college, we don't always mean a four-year university, but we do mean that high school alone is not enough anymore for a living wage that's going to enable you to have retirement and some security over time. And I think that's an issue that faces our community that I'm so happy we get to do jointly, and I think, you know, these speakers are going to be very compelling, so I hope you can attend there. They have amazing statistics and good information. I hope our students hear and our staff and parents as well. So I hope you can make it. And again, it's just an amazing opportunity for us, getting to work together and the synergy that comes from all of us. And really, it is, I mean, Donna's done a ton, and Jennifer's done a ton, and just, you know, Kawhi's done a ton. We've, it's been a team effort, so nobody, no one has this in their job description, and yet it's something that's really important for our community and kids, and it's getting done. So thank you all.
Dr. Kaufman, would you give the date and time again?
Thursday night at six to eight P.M.
This Thursday night?
Yes.
Six, eight P.M. at the...
Littleton Center.
At the Littleton Center.
Yes.
And everybody in the community is welcome?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Encouraged.
Yes. And it should be worth it. They're really amazing speakers, so it should be definitely some perspective that maybe we need to have in our, in our system a little bit.
Well, it's such a great opportunity. I mean, I can't tell you how much I appreciate your efforts. I think it's a great opportunity for the community to hear some amazing speakers, talk about education and what education means to communities. I know as a member of the City of Schools Together, it's just a great opportunity that we're having them come to our community, particularly with the possibility of a future Delta College site right in our, right in our boundary and right part of our community. So I really appreciate your efforts and are grateful.
It's been, we're excited. I mean, I hope other people come and have a good time, but I can't wait. Anyway, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheri Daly.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Sheri Daly, and I am happy to announce tonight that I am running for city council. So all of you have probably talked to me in the past, so I'm really talking more to the galley and the home audience. I just wanted to tell people a little bit about me. I've lived in the community for twenty-four years. I raised three beautiful children here in town. Currently, I'm employed as the Senior Governmental Affairs and Corporate Communications Director for the California Consortium of Addiction Programs and Professionals. So what I do for a living is I go around the state and I advocate at the state capitol for better treatment for addicts. And any of you out there who has had addiction touch your family, you know how difficult it is to access care and get treatment for your loved ones. So I have a very great career, great kids, great family, and great love for this town. So my qualifications, as far as my experience with the city, is that, are that, sorry, that I have been on the planning commission for six years now, so I think I'm pretty well-versed in what happens with the city and building and development. I'm currently the chair of the planning commission. I also served on the Parks and Recreation Ad Hoc Committee, which developed our standards for parks for years to come. I also served on the 2020 Master Plan. It wasn't a committee, but it was a group of council members and planning commissioners that basically drew the architecture, the outline, for our city's growth for the next twenty years. So that was very interesting. I also served on the founding committee for the Measure R campaign, which established more police services here in town. So that was a really exciting time, and we drove vans around with signs, "Vote for Measure R," and a really community-oriented grassroots effort to get that passed. I'm very happy with how much the new Walmart revenue has brought to our police services, making us all safe. As far as volunteer work, you name it, I've done it. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, I've chased kids around to zoo parent and get them in the blocks for swim. I've done street cleanups, cookie sales, cheer fundraisers, you name it. I've been there shoulder to shoulder with all of you out there who know me and have served with me for the youth of our community. So that's a little bit about me. You can go to sheri4galt, that's a four, not the F-O-R, dot com, and look at my credentials if you want to look further, or help my campaign out. And I just want to leave you with one other item that sadly came across my email today. Another issue that's really near and dear to me is campaign finance reform. And years ago, myself and a large group of community members went around door to door and knocked on doors, and we put a petition on the ballot to limit contributions to council candidates to ninety-nine dollars, because we thought it was really important that outside influences didn't take over how our council voted or decided things. So it was approved by a large majority of Galt residents, so very happy with that. For many years, no one has violated that ninety-nine dollar, except an occasional take-a-hundred-dollar check, and you have to actually go back and give the person like one cent or something, something minor like that. But today, I was given a notification from the Secretary of State that one of my competitors actually took a contribution for two thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. And that's very upsetting for where we are in Galt. It's also upsetting because the contribution was made via a attorney's office in downtown Sacramento that sits and stares at the state capitol. And it's really upsetting that we would have that type of attempt to influence this campaign. I have a really hard time believing that any of the fat cats I know and all, because I've been begging them for votes and for help with my projects, so I have a hard time wondering why a fat cat that sits on Eleventh and L has a twenty-eight hundred dollar interest in our campaign here in Galt. So I would just leave you with a question for the city. This is the first time the ordinance has been broken in such an egregious manner. So what is the consequence when that happens? And then a question for the voters. What is the motivation for someone to take that amount of contribution and then to hide where that money came from? Thank you.
Thank you. Angela DePrado?
Good evening, council members. So I just filled out a paper, just in case you guys have any questions regarding Measure E and K. First off, I just wanted to say I'm totally in support of Measure E and K. It's basically a reinvestment in our community. And the reason why I chose to speak and not defer is because council member Hewer had a question regarding facilities, and that there's a state, you know, funding for facilities, and I just wanted to make a clarification. There actually probably will be a bond for the state for facilities. However, yeah, however, if that passes, which would be great for our community, we'll only see a fraction of that money versus this local, the Measure K, Measure E, will actually go into our schools. The state can't take that away from us versus, you know, the statewide facilities bond that's going to be on the ballot, which I hope we also hope for, that one will be limited to how much we receive. So I just wanted to give that clarification regarding that, because I wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that as well. Also, you mentioned, hey, you know, will this bond help our facilities and gain more money in the future? The answer for the high school for Measure K is, excuse me, Measure E is yes. Actually, if we get some of our portables taken care of, eventually we'll get some of state funding regarding that as well. So I just wanted to kind of get some clarification. Actually, you guys all know me. I'm your neighbor. Been in Galt for almost thirty, over thirty years. You know my mom and dad, and, you know, I know in the past, there's been some bonds where a lot of people have questioned, you know, saying, is this right for Galt? I have to say, this is absolutely right for Galt, both Measure K and E. I say this just not only if you have a kid going into school at the elementary level or the high school level, your grandparents, but just in general for our community. If we get these facilities improved, more people outside will come into our community. They will spend money for food, they will spend money at Save Mark, Rayleigh's, when they have to go shopping for groceries. They might say, hey, I'm in Galt, I need to get some milk, I'm going to stop by the local grocery store and pick something up on my way out. That's reality. And once again, I encourage you to approach us. I'm actually the chairperson for endorsements, so feel free to talk to me if you have anything else you'd like to discuss. And like I said, I can't emphasize enough, and I think one example I just want to point out real fast is Sacramento Manjorens. They actually are in Sacramento, yet they come to our community because we can offer the facilities they can use. They use our facilities as a stadium, which is outworn, outdated, but they still come because they feel welcomed in this community. And I think we can make other people feel welcome in this community as well. So thank you, and like I said, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Council, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Gail Weber?
Hi, my name is Gail Weber. I am the chairperson and the vendor coordinator for the Galt Heritage Festival, and I just want to remind the council and members of the audience that it is this Saturday at ten to four P.M. It is going to be at Veterans Field. It is free admission, free parking. We have cultural performances. I have about seventy booths to set up, so we're going to have a lot of vendors. We have two bounce houses that are free to the kids. Both bounce houses have been sponsored, so there is no charge through the committee. We have a dinner going on at the Littleton Center, put on by the Galt Historical Society, called a Heritage Dinner. That'll be fifteen dollars. That starts at four o'clock. So I invite everyone here to come out to the Heritage Festival at Veterans Field on Saturday. It should be a good time. Thank you.
I just wanted to add something to what you said. In addition to it being a Heritage Festival, it's an opportunity for us to appreciate the diversity that we have in our community, including our police department and our fire department. We want people to realize that they are a part of the community. They're not on one side and we're on the other. So we'll be also recognizing them with our opening ceremony, and it's well deserved.
And county supervisor Donatoli will also be there, and they're doing a presentation of his family roots to him by the LDS church, so that should be interesting also. And we have T-shirt fun sale, they're ten dollars.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the information consent calendar. Do you have a motion to approve?
Some moves.
A motion by Vice Mayor Payne, second by Councilwoman Campion. There's no further discussion. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Yeah, that's what. All right. All right. Moving on to the community development department. Mr. Arias.
Good evening. Chris Arias, interim community development director. The item you have before you is the second reading of the ordinance allowing the keeping of hen chickens in the city. At the previous council meeting...
So, I would just leave you with, um, a question for the city. This is the first time the ordinance has been broken in such an egregious manner. So what is the consequence when that happens? And then a question for the voters. Um, what is the motivation for someone to take that amount of contribution and then to hide where that money came from? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. So I just filled out a paper, just in case you guys have any questions regarding Measure E and K. First off, I just wanted to say I'm totally in support of Measure E and K. Um, it's basically a reinvestment in our community. And I wanted, the reason why I chose to speak and not defer is because, um, Councilmember Hewer had a question regarding, uh, facilities, and that there's a state, you know, funding for facilities, and I just wanted to make a clarification. There actually probably will be, um, a bond for the state for facilities. However, yeah, but however, if we, if that passes, which would be great for our community, we'll only see a fraction of that money versus this local, the Measure K, Measure E, will actually go into our schools. The, the state can't take that away from us versus, you know, the statewide facilities bond that's going to be on the ballot, which I hope we also hope for, um, that one will be limited to how much we receive. So I just wanted to give that clarification regarding that, because I wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that as well. Um, also, you mentioned, hey, you know, will this, this bond help our facilities and gain more money in the future? The answer for the high school for Measure, um, K is, excuse me, Measure E is yes. Actually, if we get some of our portables taken care of, eventually we'll get some of state funding regarding that as well. So I just wanted to kind of get some clarification. Actually, you guys all know me. I'm your neighbor, been in Galt for almost thir-, over thirty years. You know, you know my mom and dad, and, you know, I know in the past, there's been some bonds where a lot of people have questioned, you know, saying, is this right for Galt? I have to say, this is absolutely right for Galt, both Measure K and E. Um, I say this just not only if you have a kid going into school at the elementary level or the high school level, your grandparents, but just in general for our community. If we get these facilities improved, more people outside will come into our community. They will spend money for food, they will spend money at Save Mark, Rayleigh's, when they have to go shopping for groceries, and they might say, hey, I'm in Galt, I need to get some milk, I'm gonna stop by the local grocery store and pick something up on my way out. That's reality. And once again, I encourage you to approach us. I'm actually the chairperson for endorsements, so feel free to talk to me if you have anything else you'd like to discuss, and, uh, like I said, I can't emphasize enough, and I think one example I just want to point out real fast is Sacramento Manjorens. They actually are in Sacramento, yet they come to our community because we can offer the facilities they commute. He used our facilities as a stadium, which is outworn, outdated, but they still come because they feel welcomed in this community. And I think we can make other people feel welcome in this community as well. So thank you, and like I said, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Counsel? Questions? Thank you. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gail Weber. I am the Chairperson and the Vendor Coordinator for the Galt Heritage Festival, and I just want to remind the council and members of the audience that it is this Saturday at ten to four P.M. It is going to be at Veterans Field. It is free admission, free parking. We have cultural performances. Um, I have about seventy booths to set up, so we're gonna have a lot of vendors. We have two bounce houses that are free to the kids. Both bounce houses have been sponsored, so there is no charge through the committee. Um, we have a dinner going on at the Littleton Center, put on by the Galt Historical Society, called a Heritage Dinner. That'll be fifteen dollars, that starts at four o'clock. So I invite everyone here to come out to the Heritage Festival at Veterans Field on Saturday. Um, it should be a good time. Thank you.
I just wanted to add something to what you said. In addition to it being a Heritage Festival, it's an opportunity for us to appreciate the diversity that we have in our community, including our police department and our fire department. We want people to realize that they are, uh, a part of the community. They're not on one side and we're on the other. So we'll be also recognizing them with our opening ceremony, and it's well-deserved.
And, uh, Congress, um, County Supervisor Don Nottoli will also be there, and they're doing a presentation of his family roots to him by the, um, LDS church, so that should be interesting also. And we have T-shirt fun sale, they're ten dollars.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the information consent calendar. Do you have a motion to approve?
Some moves.
A motion by Vice Mayor Payne, second by Councilwoman Campion. There's no further discussion. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Yeah, no sweat. All right. All right, he stepped out. All right. Moving on to the Community Development Department.
Uh, good evening. Chris Arias, interim Community Development Director. The item you have before you is the second reading of the ordinance allowing the keeping of hen chickens in the city. At the previous council meeting, the council voted three-two to introduce the ordinance allowing the keeping of the chickens in the city limits. And as you know, the city only allows the keeping of domesticated animals at this point, which are defined essentially as household pets. Non-domesticated animals, including chickens, are not permitted to be kept in the city. The proposed ordinance would allow the keeping of up to four hen chickens, no roosters, on a property with a detached single-family home. Uh, some of the conditions include requiring that chickens be kept in an enclosure with a minimum ten-foot setback and a maximum height on the coop of eight feet. As a reminder, the planning commission voted two to one to recommend that the city council not adopt the proposed chicken ordinance. The planning commissioners and the council members, uh, that voted against the ordinance were primarily concerned about the city's ability to enforce the ordinance. Since code enforcement and complaints regarding the chickens have been a concern, uh, the staff report includes information regarding past complaints pertaining to the chickens. So over the past five years, there have been seventy-four complaints, uh, that averages slightly over one per month. And it should be noted that forty-four of the complaints were related to roosters, not, um, hens. Uh, so the council was asked tonight to consider approving the ordinance, which will amend Chapter Six and Eighteen of the Galt Municipal Code and allow the keeping of the hen chickens. Uh, that concludes the staff report summary. Uh, staff, including the city's code enforcement officer, are available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chris. Counsel?
I, I have questions. Uh, Chris, on this, uh, the ordinance says that, uh, the, um, enclosures are to be with, uh, at a minimum of ten feet from your side near a property line, maximum height of eight feet. How will that be enforced?
Um, mostly by how we enforce other, uh, code complaints, and it's usually complaint-driven. So if there is a complaint, uh, the city code enforcement officer would then open up a case and investigate the issue.
And, um, so for all other items, in terms of ensuring that you have the airtight container for the removal of air cleaning and maintenance, um, adequate food-water ventilation, uh, spoilage, all of those things are, again, complaint-driven?
Uh huh, correct.
And it would be then incumbent of the code enforcement officer to somehow gain access to the property?
Uh, correct.
And how was that done?
Uh, I would assume in a similar manner that has been done in the past by, uh, first speaking with the property owner and trying to get, uh, access voluntarily. Uh, and I think, uh, the code enforcement officer's been successful in past issues on being able to do that.
And what was the resolution on the past issues?
Well, the resolution has typically been compliance with, and not pertaining to chickens necessarily, but maybe setback issues with sheds and other things that cannot be seen from the street, but really need access to the backyard to be seen. So if there is a complaint from a neighbor, uh, the code enforcement officer then speaks with, uh, the homeowner and, in some cases, or in most cases, can get access voluntarily from the property owner.
And if it's, and if it's not voluntary, what happens for access?
Yes, if I could, uh, just address that. So if we have a situation where, uh, a property owner is not willing to provide access to their property, and we believe that there is a, uh, code enforcement violation, then the city has the ability to obtain what's called an inspection warrant. And so this is an administrative inspection warrant. It is not the same as a criminal inspection warrant. Um, it still is a, an intrusion on, on people's constitutional rights, so there is some showing required, but it's not at the same level as for a, a criminal warrant. Basically, the two things that we need to show when we go and we, uh, obtain an administrative inspection warrant is we need to show, first, that we've asked the property owner to, uh, to allow us access to the property and they've refused. And then the second thing is we need to show reasonable cause. And the way that that is shown is we prepare a declaration, a written document by the code enforcement officer, that, uh, details why he thinks there is a code enforcement violation on the property, uh, and why that information would indicate that there is a violation of the municipal code. Um, when we go to get the warrant, usually it is held without any notice to the property owner. It's usually held in the judge's chambers. It's pretty informal, and the judge asks the, uh, code enforcement officer any additional information that, uh, he or she desires to know. If the judge is so inclined to issue the warrant, it's usually pretty, uh, pretty focused to, uh, address the particular situation. So what the judge can do is indicate, uh, what property, what can be inspected, what portions of the property can be inspected, um, what actions can be taken during the inspection, whether we need to give notice to the property owner, the times of the inspection, and whether force can be used. So in this particular situation, if we thought we had a code compliance issue in somebody's backyard, we would seek an inspection warrant that was focused on only gaining access to the backyard. We would ask for, uh, the warrant to provide notice to the property owner at twenty-four hours, that we only inspect the property during daylight, and that there would be no force, uh, exercised by, uh, code enforcement or police. If we had a compliance issue, we would go back to the court and seek a, uh, an order of contempt. So when we go to court on these inspection warrants, we have to have a packet of information for the judge, the declaration I talked about, we have to have an application for the warrant, we have to prepare a memorandum that, uh, tells the judge why he has the legal authority to issue the warrant, and then we actually draft the proposed, uh, warrant if the judge is so inclined. Um, drafting, preparing these, these types of documents takes about four hours' time, roughly. Uh, the appearance in the court, two hours, and then after the inspection warrant is served, there's actually a document we need to serve with the court, um, called a return, which tells the court that we actually served the, uh, the inspection and what occurred. So bottom line, minimum time to, uh, to do a simple administrative warrant is about eight hours' time. Whether I do it internally or we hire it out, if you want to put a monetary value on that, it's about a two-thousand-dollar cost to, at, at a minimum for a simple inspection warrant.
So that's probably why you don't do them very often. How many have you done complaints about dogs, let's just say? Have you ever done any of those?
Yes, so since I've been, uh, city attorney, the only time that I've been asked to, uh, assist in obtaining an inspection warrant is for the Royal Delta, which is obviously much more complicated and costly. Um, I don't recall since two thousand and eight, any other time I've been asked to, uh, seek an inspection warrant for a code enforcement matter.
Do you have to get that from the code enforcement person, or can you get it from the person that's, uh, like the neighbor? Can a neighbor ask you to do, um, what you just described?
Um, no, we would not get, we would not go to court and seek an inspection warrant based only on a neighbor's complaint. What we would do is we would have the code enforcement officer investigate the matter. If he feels that, uh, there is reasonable justification, that there's been a code violation, then we would prepare the declaration for the code enforcement officer, and then I or another attorney would go to court with the code enforcement officer to seek the warrant.
Some other ordinance I don't think that we've done too much about.
Um, so the eight hours of time, is that your time, or is that your time and code enforcement's in terms of investigation and follow-up, and as well as the community development director's time?
Well, the, the eight hours that I estimated would, um, that would include the combined time of the code enforcement officer and myself, once I'm asked to get involved. So I don't know what, uh, what time the code enforcement officer would spend before, uh, he came to me, but once he said, I need your help in, uh, ga- gaining a warrant, um, drafting time that I talked about would include my talking to the code enforcement officer, preparing a draft declaration, showing it to him, making any changes, finalizing it, preparing the other legal documents. Appearance at court, uh, two hours would be, uh, combined time, my time in code enforcement, and then return of the warrant would only be my time. So that's a, you know, that's a rough number on a, a simple case. That would be the minimum time that I could see for that type of process.
And to date, we have not used an inspection warrant to, um, to respond to any, um, complaints regarding the housing of chickens. Is that correct?
Not that, not that I can call, recall, or that I've been involved with.
I, I guess what, 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 what that all, you know, demonstrates to me is that, um, here today, chickens are not allowed to be housed in the city of Galt. And we've had, you know, seventy-five complaints, a little, uh, half, a little less than half of which were for hen chickens, and they are already outright disallowed. Once they are allowed, it is also highly unlikely, it, and, and, and I, uh, another question comes, where would these, these monies be budgeted? I mean, you're talking two thousand dollars a complaint, assuming that a decision is made to file an inspection warrant. I mean, and I, and under what circumstances, I guess, um, kind of, different areas, but under what circumstances would the inspection warrant process be used for chickens?
So I think it would be used in a situation where we had a, a significant complaint from a neighbor. We did not have cooperation from the neighbor, and the, um, the complaint was of a significant enough nature that we felt that we needed to expend city resources in order to address the complaint. So just like, you know, with every code enforcement, uh, violation that comes to our, comes to our knowledge, we need to make an assessment, if we don't gain voluntary compliance, whether or not the, uh, the violation is significant enough to warrant the expenditure funds go forth. And so we would have to do that, that level of assessment based on what type of violation, uh, we're looking at. And the ones that usually gain most, uh, most attention from us are the ones that are, uh, presenting a significant health, safety, uh, concern. If we have somebody that's, you know, they're supposed to be ten feet from the fence line and they're nine feet, and that's the only issue that we've got, you may be a little bit more reluctant to expand resources to go to court. But if we have a situation where we've got, uh, you know, a odor coming from the property, uh, we can tell that there's, there's vermin visiting the property because the, uh, it's not being kept in a clean state, then we're much more likely to determine that we need to spend city resources and go get a warrant and take care of the situation.
You know, my, 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 uh, my concern is, one, we, we already have an ordinance that disallows chickens, and people have chickens. Um, and, and, you know, I guess that's fine, um, as long as their neighbors don't know. Uh, I'm, I'm not advocating breaking the law, but it appears that, uh, you know, at least in, in those cases, uh, you know, if someone did show up, it might be better to ask for forgiveness, uh, rather than passing an ordinance which outlaw, outright allows chickens, uh, citywide. Um, you know, this is an urban area. I, I don't see that housing chickens in your backyard where, in most backyards, um, and Chris, maybe you can confirm this, I don't believe that you can put a coop, which is ten by ten, uh, uh, within the setback areas, particularly in the new homes being constructed, because there is no rear yard.
Yeah, our typical, you know, R1C home is sixty-five hundred square feet, so it's sixty-five by a hundred, uh, based on the size of the front setback, the house, you are looking at a minimal backyard. So if they were to have a coop, it's not gonna be very big, and it's gonna be right in the middle of the backyard. It won't be tucked up against a fence, but you have the sixty-five hundred square foot lots and above that can probably fit it. But it would be, in most cases, the middle of the yard.
Which, which leads to another issue, is that they will most likely end up in side yards or in rear yards immediately adjacent to their, to their neighbors, um, where you further, uh, the potential for a conflict, uh, between neighbors. I mean, I, I just see, I just see this as something that, um, isn't necessary. I believe it's unenforceable, it hasn't been enforced in the past, and, uh, simply cannot support it. Uh, it, it, it makes literally very little sense to me.
Any further discussion?
I just think it's interesting that when I can't sleep at night, I, uh, watch other city council meetings. And last week, the city of Citrus Heights, which is actually much more urban than we are, passed an ordinance allowing six hens in people's backyards. So I, um, don't think that it's unreasonable that, um, I think there's a whole movement among, among, um, people to know where their food comes from. It's why the gardens have been popular. Elk Grove is looking at, um, allowing urban farming, which is in, within their city, doing a whole farming movement. I think it all comes down to that, and, and people wanting to, uh, have, know where their food comes from, and have some access to being able to, to raise their, their own food. And I, I think that four chickens is a pretty minimal amount. Um, I actually think the setbacks are way too, way too restrictive, but I am willing to go along with that. We don't have this restrictive of setbacks for all the sheds and structures and huge buildings that people put in their backyards and, and when we talk-
It's the same for anything over a hundred and twenty square feet, anything over a hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
It has to be ten foot, ten foot and ten foot, or five foot and ten.
Five and ten, five from the side, ten from the rear.
But all over town they aren't.
Some of them are placed, you know, not in compliance with the ordinance and-
And we're not able to enforce those, exactly. Drive by and see all these that don't work, but if they can't go in the backyard, it'll look like they're not enforced.
There's no further discussion? I'm entertaining a motion.
Do we have any, um, response?
Oh, I'm sorry. There it is. I'm sorry, we do have one public.
I'm cold and very nervous, so if I shake, I'm not a public speaker. Okay, um, I am for the city of Galt having chickens. I see no reason why we shouldn't, and all our surrounding cities allow them. We are the smallest of them all, where you would assume they are already allowed. The surrounding cities obviously don't get enough complaints to take away their city ordinance that allows them chickens, or they would have done so already. So being that, we are so much smaller, I don't see the problem. We already know the pros about chickens, such as teaching children responsibility, knowing where our food comes from, their waste is helpful in our gardens, they rid our yard of bugs, et cetera, good pets, so I won't get into the depth on that, because most of us already agree on that stuff, the good stuff. Chickens are great for lots of reasons. So I would like to touch upon a few things. Someone brought up allergies. I don't think that should even be an issue, because lots of people are allergic to cats and dogs. They're not banned from our city. We just stay away from those particular animals if we are. Chickens are noisy, was brought up, but so are my neighbor's dogs sometimes, um, but I'm a nice neighbor and I can handle a little barking. Um, my neighbor's cats are noisy sometimes outside my window because they, um, are in season, if you know what I mean. Most animals produce some noise at some point, um, and I think my neighbor's dogs produce much more noise than any chickens usually do, or would. Cleanliness seemed to, um, be another issue. Well, chickens will be no messier than a dog or cat, but the difference is that I keep, uh, is that I can keep chickens' waste within my own yard, and they are more likely, more than likely, um, won't be escaping and roaming the neighborhood, pooping on my neighbor's lawns or on my front plant area where cats like to go in my yard. It was mentioned previously, some things about how expensive each egg is gonna cost us, after all the money we put into their housing, food, et cetera. Well, if it really does cost that much to have, um, our fresh eggs, which I personally don't think it does, um, isn't that our choice to make if we want to spend that much or not? Um, last but not least, code enforcement seems to be a big issue, obviously. I've heard that in the last, I do believe you said five years, that there's been seventy-four complaints to the code enforcement, forty-four of which are roosters. Obviously, if they're gonna know there's no roosters, people aren't gonna attempt, in my opinion, to sneak them as much if they know there's no roosters. But you can have chickens. Um, it said only, uh, let's see, only sixteen of those seventy-four complaints were from all other animals. I, for one, I'm not sure if this could possibly be true, because I know a couple of people who have called in the last year, four or five times combined. So does that mean only eleven complaints in the last five years have been made on all other animals? With as many barking dogs that I hear every day, and, uh, loose cats pooping on everybody's property, I highly doubt it. And I love animals, dogs, cats, don't get me wrong. I'm just talking for chickens tonight. So that leaves twenty-eight complaints for hens in five years. That means there are five to six complaints on hens per year currently. I don't think that is too much to handle, and if we do pass the chickens ordinance, I honestly think we'll have less complaints. If, maybe the same, because people are gonna know that chickens are, it's, it's an ordinance, we can have chickens. Um, I don't think that's too much to handle, and when I spoke to our code, code, sorry, code enforcer about this, he really- code enforcer about this, he really didn't seem too stressed about the chicken ordinance passing, but that was just my opinion, so. And if any of you pay any attention, as you mentioned, um, when you drive through Galt, it's very clear that tons of people already seem to have chickens, and we've all survived. So, um, thank you for your time, and taking into consideration about the chickens. I, I think it goes right along with cats and dogs, we manage. I mean, how many complaints you get from the different people, there's always going to be a few people who, um, aren't going to like it. There's a lot of people who have way too many dogs. People don't like it, but we all manage, so, thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Al Baldwin, the Concerned Chicken of Galt. Uh, let me ask you something. I was watching, uh, the movie Paper Chase. It's an old movie. It's about kids going to college, or young adults, and learning how to become attorneys and lawyers. And the teacher was emphatic, uh, on different things, and gave examples. This would be a perfect example, I think. But it's not having chickens, or, or not having chickens, it's a matter of if they do it correctly. And Mr. Campion brought up a good point. If we're going to change the law, fine. If we're going to bend the law, that's your option. If, if they can't have it ten feet away from the fences, and they got them where they're at now, then that's, it, it needs to be changed. Maybe they need to register if they have chickens, so we can make sure that everything is, is above board. I'll give you a quickie example. I, I moved here into Galt, and I bought a new home on the east side before, years ago, Guttridge Home. In the backyard, of my backyard, at that time, it was still an open lot, but it was an open lot, it was on a dirt way. And we put up a patio, and I had someone do it, and I thought he did it right. Well, guess what? We had a fire in the backyard, not our yard, I mean, the back forty, I guess you could say. And so, they came and they, they put water on it, and trying to put it out, and then we had the inspector come by and see how bad the fences were, and all that, looked over the fence, saw that I had a patio, and I got sighted, and I had to correct it. Is that going to be the case here, if a neighbor has to have something done? Will the person look over the fence and see that the chicken coop is three feet away from the fence, or whatever, and then do something about it? It's not whether you want chickens or not chickens. Sure, have chickens if you want, just got to do it by the law. If you can't do it by the law, then we're bending it. And if we're bending it, that's your challenge, not mine. You're the ones that's got to live with it. I say, sure, chickens are great, they're wonderful. When I was growing up, we raised chickens in our house, in a residential area. So, I know what you go through, but if you're going to have chickens in your backyard, and there is an ordinance that it should be done a certain way, are you going to enforce that? And if so, then the people should come up here and say, and take their word for it if you want. No, mine's ten feet away from each, each fence, and five feet here. Uh, if, if they want to make that statement, then fine. It's up to you guys. But if you're going to bend the law, and you're doing it in public, you're setting the example. I love chickens, not bad to raise, but you got to do it according to the way the ordinance and the laws and the restrictions say. It's your call.
Thank you. Thank you, Al. Thank you, Al. Any further discussion in council? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance. I've already expressed my thoughts in the past as to why I think we should do that, and I'm not going to go over them again, but-
Okay. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Payne, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Hewer. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne? Aye. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Councilmember Powers?
No.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. That's just three-two. Moving on to public works. Mr. Winkler?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, this next item is regarding award of a contract for a wastewater cost of service study, and a water, wastewater, and stormwater connection fee update process. Uh, this item requests authorization from the city manager to execute a contract with Raftellus Financial Consultants to perform a wastewater cost of service study, and to review and recommend updates for the city's current connection fees as applicable to new development. Uh, the recommended contract amount is one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, one hundred and fifty-four, one hundred and fourteen, uh, with a ten percent contingency. Uh, the proposed work would include a review of the city's current and projected costs to provide wastewater services to our various customer classes. Uh, it will also include a new debt service component, uh, review from the SRF loan that was, uh, approved in the last couple of years to fund the current upgrades that are being mandated upon the city, and they are now nearing completion. It will also include a review of our operating costs, capital improvement needs, and future replacement costs for our wastewater system, determine what portion of these costs should be borne by new development, and then would recommend appropriate sewer rate adjustments down the road. Also, in anticipation of significant, planned new development proposals that have been in the news, the work will include a review of the adequacy of the city's current wet utility connection fees, that being wastewater and storm drainage, uh, to provide for future infrastructure needs. Uh, the recommended actions also include a fund transfer and supplemental appropriation to augment the existing available budget, uh, to fund these studies. And now, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council questions?
Yeah, um, Steve, on the, when, when you do the analysis for each one of these, uh, funds, uh, in, in, arriving at the, uh, fee amounts, will they be broken down, um, by component type, operation, maintenance, capital? Uh, will you see a breakdown in that as part of the, um, study?
Yes, and it'll probably be buried in the technical addendums that go with the study, but it will all be public record, and they will categorize the costs and the projection of how those costs will change or not over time, uh, with a growing customer base.
For, for purposes of, of the final product, um, or in the summary, I, if you wouldn't mind, could you keep in mind that I would like to be able to easily identify, what is capital, what is maintenance and operation, and what are the other component parts, if there are any, when it comes to determining what the, what the final fee is for each of these categories?
I think we can accommodate that request.
I'd appreciate that.
Very good.
Thank you. Any others? I do have a question for concerning an actual compliance deadline. Are we going to make it in time? I see it was extended to, uh, this month.
With the current time schedule orders and extensions that go with those in place, uh, we're optimistic that we will be able to beat all of our current requirements.
And if we should have an issue, can we ask for an additional extension, or are we going to be in the-
I'm going to defer to Mark on that process, but I believe the answer is yes, we can always request.
Mayor of council? We have, a TSO just ended on September first, just, uh, a few days ago, and we've been meeting those discharge requirements for about three months on the new system that we have. So, we're pretty confident that we're going to be able to go forward on that. That's nitrogen and ammonia removal. As far as the arsenic, we're still three years away from that, or, sorry, two years away from that, and we should hit it. It, we have plenty of time to do all of our design and construction, so, we should hit it, um, pretty easy.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? I'm assuming we can do this all in one lump sum. Do I have a motion? A motion by Councilmember Campion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Payne. We don't have any further discussion, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. You know, so, moving on to the city clerk's report.
League of California Cities Conference designation of voting delegate, recommended appoint a voting representative as the city's voting delegate to the League of California Cities Annual Conference in October, and received the annual conference resolution packet, which is attached to the agenda report.
Okay. Do we have any nominations?
Nominate you.
Who's attending?
He's two.
I won't be attending.
Just me, though.
No, so, he's, I was going to, but something came up, I can't make it, so, I would nominate-
Are the only person attending Mark?
Yes.
Can, can, can the manager, city manager be the backup, or alternative? I don't know what to say.
That's a good question, I don't know. I think it's just electeds.
He's always showing up and always going, so, he's trustworthy for that. There's only one resolution, so.
We had the conversation that's happened.
I mean, there's only one resolution, so.
Yeah, uh, there may be others that come up, and if you guys need me to, I can keep you abreast of what's going on.
Yeah, 'cause I think we need to have input on the voting, um, of the resolution.
But as of right now, I believe it's just the safety issue, the vision proclamation they want to push forward.
So, do we need to provide direction on, on the voting for that?
Yes, please. I, I nominate, uh, Mark.
I have two nominations here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second it.
Do we need to call for a vote?
Who, who has the second?
The second.
Mary Lou.
Mary Lou. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
You don't have a choice, aye. All right, I will keep you abreast of what's going on as far as any other issues that come up.
Well, can we discuss the resolution?
Absolutely.
So, the resolution is for, um, committing the League of California Cities to supporting Vision Zero, toward zero deaths, and other programs or initiatives, to make safety a top priority for transportation projects and policy formation, while encouraging cities to pursue similar initiatives. I think that's a resolution that we should support.
Absolutely.
Because thirty thousand people are killed on the streets of the United States in traffic collisions yearly. So, if there's anything that the state can do to, that cities can do to make it safer, I mean, we've done a lot of, it's not an issue for us here in Galt right now, but I think it is a resolution that we should support as a city. So, I would recommend that we support the resolution.
Okay.
Have we got a motion?
Absolutely. Motion. Motion by Councilmember Hewer, and a second by Councilmember Campion. If we don't have any further discussion, call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. I do have one question. If something should come up when I'm there, I'm assuming I've run it through Gene, and Gene will make sure, everybody else knows what's going on.
We can do it.
I just want to make sure we're still in resolutions on the floor, because there are several that are still, still coming from public safety that I'm aware of. I don't know the specifics, but I've been told by several, they're, they're going to be trying to garner votes, so, be tuned.
Probably, probably Gene and Steve, if there's-
Yeah, if something comes up, then I would get it to-
Has to do with, uh, you know.
Well, worst comes to worst, I'll find the fax machine and get it to you.
Email, yeah, if it, uh, does come up, and I'll be at the conference with you, so we can, uh, communicate with, uh, whoever we need to, to give direction.
Okay. City clerk's office, one more.
The city of Galt Military Banner Program. The recommended action is to adopt a resolution approving the city of Galt Military Banner Program policy and guidelines. Uh, in September two thousand and eleven, Mayor Cruz started up the Military Banner Program. The original application included active military in a war zone. We currently have twenty-nine usable street poles with, uh, thirteen military banners raised, and with the help of SOFCOM, to raise and lower the military banners helps keep the cost down. Staff is recommending revising the program to include active duty military, veterans, and memorials. Family members, residents, organizations, organizations, and business owners will have the opportunity to sponsor a banner by making a donation for one hundred dollars, which includes the production and installation of the banner. The hope is to eventually have the program becoming, uh, become self-funding. Uh, we currently do have Mayor Cruz's discretionary funds to be utilized to offset any costs not anticipated this fiscal year, and we will be monitoring the program as well. Included the last five years, uh, program costs, includes banners, hardware, the installation and removal, and then also the attachment of the policy, the application. Um, I had a comment from Councilmember Hewer, which actually was a very good suggestion to remove, in the middle portion of the application, the, um, requirement to be active duty banner to have to have gone to a high school, here on the, um, high school district boundaries, so we removed that. And instead, we just have the question, does the service person or applicant reside in the Galt Joint Union High School district boundaries? And I gave a copy to every council member. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Hewer?
Mm-hmm.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion?
No, I like the policy, the policy's good. I didn't realize we didn't have one.
No.
But I, I think that, uh, staff developed, uh, addressed at least the concerns that I could, could think of, and, and, uh, I think with the application now consistent with the policy, it's great.
Okay. Do we have a motion to?
So, move.
To, a motion by Councilmember Campion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hewer. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to staff. Emily, you've been awful quiet over there, anything?
Uh, not tonight, thank you.
Yes?
Uh, nothing tonight, thanks.
Steve?
Well, thank you.
Mark?
I have this microphone so close to me. We have a couple of things. Over on Lincoln and Cost Road, where we, where the developers done some improvements along the roadway there, and we've done some story seals and some other things, the striping and the reflective, a new signing should be up in the next two days. Just, uh, tomorrow, they'll start, uh, patch marking out there where the new striping goes. We approve it, uh, hopefully by noon tomorrow, and then, and then everything else will be done within a, a day and a half. The other thing is, I mentioned earlier about September first being the first time scheduled order that we've hit on the treatment plant. If you head out to the treatment plant, you're welcome to come out, and, um, if you see some operators dancing up on the oxidation ditches, feel free to join in. It's pretty happy. Thank you.
Chief Sockman?
I have nothing.
Gene?
I have one item there, and, uh, this is the latest information that we have on Delta College, and, uh, when they would, uh, hear, uh, the item to, uh, locate a campus, you know, on the south end of our community, and latest information we have is that they're going to hear a briefing on October eighteenth, and we believe it'll be at first, um, you know, at the beginning of the meeting at five P.M. Uh, and we were told that they would be making some decisions on November fifteenth, which would be a month later. Um, again, that's all, you know, what, best information we have at this point, you know, it's been continued on, you know, uh, two of the months here, uh, want to bring that to our attention, because we have, um, council meetings on those two dates. So, as I, those dates get closer, and if I get, uh, confirmation that they're on the meetings, we may need to move our council meeting dates, if we want a contingent of council and community to attend those meetings and, and participate.
Very good. Steve?
Nothing.
We'll move on, we'll sit down here. Councilmember Campion?
Yes, um, I passed out a, uh, passed out something, oh, councilmembers, a letter, went to the editor regarding, uh, oh, the flea market and compliance with AB thirty-seven seventy-three. Coincidentally, I had, uh, been in touch with the, uh, city manager over the last couple of weeks. Um, I, I remember the public had asked a, a number of questions, and they'd actually written a communication to me, and I had asked, uh, the city manager and the, um, finance director, prepared a response to a number of the questions as it related to sales tax, uh, the cost allocation plan, um, uh, and, uh, the auditing of the O-six or flea market fund. the auditing of the O6 or flea market fund. I think for clarification to the public and all, I know that the memo that council received here in the last week is very comprehensive and addresses most of the issues, but I think it's important for the public to have a full understanding of, you know, the flea market, its operation, what restrictions we have. And I would ask the council to authorize and direct the city manager to prepare a formal response, a letter, to respond to this, or in some fashion that staff feels appropriate to actually, you know, accurately address what the concerns that have been raised recently, in the most recent Galt Herald. So with that, I would just...
I don't have a problem with that, because I brought it up to Jean, too. So, yes, I brought the same exact thing to him last week. So, yeah, I think it's important sometimes when there is a lot of misinformation that the right stuff needs to get out.
Correct.
And even as I look at the second letter to the editor, it's wrong.
Well, I'm only referring to the...
I know, I know.
Regarding the flea market.
I hear you.
Unless there's any objection, staff, I would like to have staff...
You look like you wanna say something.
Yeah, I can certainly prepare a response, and what I like to do is bring that back to the city council at the next meeting, just so the city council can, you know, take a look at the response, then we can provide an opportunity to do some education and approve that letter that we have to send back out.
I think it's fair enough.
Well, bringing it back to the next council meeting, I don't know. I think that things need to be responded to in a timely manner, and a little concerned, I mean, I, you, you prepared a response to us and gave us the information regarding, that really did cover most of the information in here, or actually probably all of the information in here. I'm personally fine with the fact of you preparing a letter in response to it and not waiting two weeks for it to come back to us and then another week.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I think that things need to be timely. I mean, we need to respond to things in a timely manner, and I actually think it is important to respond, because there is so much misinformation in this, and some of the numbers are very wrong. I mean, I think for informational purposes, you could put it on our next agenda, but I actually think that the letter needs to, that we need to write a letter to the Galt Herald, to the editor of the Galt Herald, responding to clarify the information. I just think the community needs to have the correct information regarding the operations of the market and what the real cost numbers are, and what the real requirements are of AB 3773.
Well, to that extent, I mean, the city management obviously provide us copies before it goes out, and if we have a concern, we can raise it as a concern, but I agree with you, the comments or the response that we received already does appear to cover most, if not all, of the issues raised. And I think timeliness is important, so I would agree.
Okay.
Okay. Consider it done.
Any marching orders?
Thank you.
Councilmember Powers?
No, I have nothing to say, except that I'm looking forward to the Heritage Festival and wanting to be there.
Okay. Councilmember Hewer?
Yeah. In addition to the Heritage Festival, it's the fundraiser for the historical society, the dinner that night, so I hope the community comes out to attend. I don't generally respond to comments made by community members, but I am a little concerned about some comments that were made tonight regarding campaign finance and our city ordinance. I don't really understand the impact of violating or the potential violation of a city ordinance in regards to this. I know there's been, this is a voter-approved ordinance. If in fact there was a violation of the voter-approved ordinance, I find it to be disrespectful to the voters. I know when I, two years ago, I received a copy of the ordinance, was well aware of what the limitations are. And even two years ago, we signed a statement saying that we would comply with the ordinance. I'm concerned if we have members of the public, or, you know, if we have community members that are running for office and not complying with the ordinance. You know, the ordinance, I supported that ordinance. I also walked door to door for that ordinance. The voters passed it by an overwhelming majority and said that they didn't want outside influences influencing elections in our community. I understand that some of the ordinance probably has had, can't be enforced, you know, or is difficult to enforce. I mean, district attorneys, we don't have an enforcement agency here, we're not a law, we're not an enforcement agency for campaign finance, but I'd really encourage that we comply with it as good citizens and as running for office. I mean, I know that two years ago, I worked very hard to comply with that and only take those $99.99 donations. Independent expenditures, my understanding is this expenditure was an independent expenditure. You know, independent expenditures, I also raised the same question as a community member, that we have attorneys in Sacramento that are wanting to influence elections in Galt, and why are they wanting to influence elections in Galt? It was, you know, the ordinance was originally passed because of the concerns that developers were spending a lot of money to influence elections in Galt. I don't know who spent this money, but it concerns me that we have that. And we have a voter-approved ordinance, that the voters of the community agreed on. This isn't a council ordinance, this is a voter-approved ordinance. And so I would just really encourage all members, all people, I mean, running for the city council to abide by the voter-approved ordinance.
Well, I have to add something to that, if you don't mind, because two years ago, there was plenty of stuff in the papers, pros, in the mail, pros and cons, and from different expense, what do you call them? Expenditures.
Independent expenditures.
Independent expenditures. Expenditures for a lot of the leading people here, some special groups, and also some negativity towards some. And so to say that this was the first year that anybody's tried that, I think is wrong, because just go back and look, but it appeared in the mail last year. And, you know, it was quite a few different people running for office. You can go back and look at a lot of them. Like I said, there were pros and cons, there were some mean things said about some from other people, and this isn't the first year that it's gone that way with the independent expenditures, so I think it's wrong to get up and say that it is, when it hasn't been. And that's my, that's my take on it.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Gee, I was gonna talk about the choo-choo train, you said the Jabola Center, but after this serious discussion, it seems a little bit frivolous, but I am excited about it. We are gonna have a room, the Jabola Center is going to be full of trains, and not just regular trains, but Lego trains. And we think it's gonna be just a super thing for our community. But in addition to that, I respect everybody's right to get up and speak. I was disappointed with what I heard at this council meeting tonight, that's just me. And I'll let it go with that. But come out to the Heritage Festival and have a good time and be the community that I think we are, and that is a caring, close-knit community, not a fractured one.
No negativity.
Well said. I'm looking forward to the Heritage Festival. My little boys are dying to see the trains.
What about the kilt?
I thought you were gonna let that one go. Yes, the man will be out there in his kilt.
Oh, boy. What kind's that?
And you're not peeking under it.
Didn't say that, just wanted to know what color it was.
And a serious note, this council meeting comes before, well, it's not a celebration, and be honest with you, I'm kinda at a loss for words just thinking about it. It's a very somber day, let's say September 11th is Sunday, and please remember, don't forget what we lost. More for those we've lost, and for all those who survived, September 11th, 2001. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
I'm glad to mention that, and I was just talking about the chief and the department being there at the Heritage Festival.